Okay, I'd like to open the February 17th, 2015 meeting of the Warrington Board of Aldermen. Open it with the Fledge of Allegiance. Tony, would you use some of the Fledge of Allegiance?
My Fledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, we would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the Strategic Planning Committee meeting of January 19th, 2015. Still move?
Second.
Motion from Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer. Roll call vote?
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Abstain of his absence.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero with one extension.
I just want to do that.
Okay, as we do every month, we will open the meeting to any comments from the public. Please limit your comments to five minutes, otherwise we request that you have to be put on a future agenda. Do we have anybody here? Any comments from the public? Looks like we have none. I would also open the comments to any members of the boards. Any members of the board? Any of the Aldermen have anything?
Nope, down here.
Everything's good there? Under Mayor's comments, one of the things that's come up and would ask all the board members, we have vacancies on four of the boards. Planning and zoning, we have a vacancy. Park Board, we have a vacancy. IDA, we have a vacancy. And tourism, we have two vacancies. So I would ask if any of the board members have any recommendations? Anybody in the wards, or anybody you've talked to from the public that would be interested in serving on any of these boards? I think the one that is probably priority right now is the IDA because we have an issue coming up with the IDA and they don't have enough members to pass it. Is that correct, Terry?
That's correct.
So that is probably the top priority right now. So, anybody have anybody in mind or anything? Or if you do, please bring it to my attention so we can get moving on it.
We'll email you? Email you?
Email me, yeah, that'd be good.
It's a good way to get shot by just throwing people's names out first.
Well, yeah, I would like, I don't want, you know, I've had, heard some people that are, but I'll give you all the opportunity to out there if there's somebody knocking on your doors or something like that. Okay, that's all the comments I have. Next order of business is approval to hire and an introduction of Deborah Hirschak as the new cashier at $12 an hour with start date of 2/11/15. I met her today. So who's going to introduce her?
We have to approve to hire first. Don't we have to approve to hire?
Oh, you want to approve? We approve it first?
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to hire Deborah Hirschak as the new cashier at $12 an hour with start date of 2/11/15. Second.
Motion by Alderperson Casterly, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the hire of Deborah Hirschak as full-time cashier, $12 an hour. Roll call vote?
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Okay, and that is approved, six to zero. And now make, am I pronouncing the name correctly? You want to do the introduction?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Debbie Hirschak as the new cashier. We are very, very happy to have her on our team.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
And we didn't butcher that last name.
So we did, we did right?
Herschak.
Herschak.
Hirschak, okay.
Herschak.
Thank you. Next order of business is the approval to hire Thomas Neldon. So I will entertain a motion to hire Thomas Neldon as building inspector at 1683 per hour with a start date of 2/16/2015.
I make a motion that we approve the hire of Thomas Neldon as a building inspector at 1683 per hour with a start date of February 16th, 2015.
Motion by Alderperson Hawley to have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Dryer. Roll call vote?
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Approval of that, six to zero. And that'd be Jack or Guy?
Yeah, he's in our department. So I'd like to introduce Thomas Neldon, the new building inspector.
Welcome aboard, Thomas.
Thank you.
Next order of business, I will entertain a motion to approve the hiring of Gregory Hillkey as permanent part-time code enforcement officer at $12 per hour with start date of February 16th, 2015.
I'll make a motion to hire Gregory Hillkey as a permanent part-time code enforcement officer, $12 an hour, start date of 12, or 2/16/2015.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the hiring of Greg Hillkey as permanent part-time code enforcement officer. Roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
We have approval, unanimous approval, so...
Once again.
Jack, once again?
Yep, I'd like to introduce Gregory Hillkey. Sorry. As a time code enforcement officer.
Greg, welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, next order of business is the, we'll introduce Deana Dothage. Deana, do you want to get up and address this here real quick?
Sure, thanks for having me.
Now, and I do have to ask, now I've heard of both, is it Dothage or Dotage?
It depends on who you ask.
What part of the county you're in?
I pronounce it Deana Dothage.
Okay.
But I answer to all versions of either of those names.
Okay.
So hopefully all of you have heard of MoRides and read the story that Tim did a fantastic story in the paper, the best of all the stories I've seen so far. So I want to tell you a little bit more about this program. This is a grant-funded program that's under the direction of Boon's Lake Regional Planning. And I know you have the brochures on your computer, but I'd like you to have some to pass out to where I want to go. And I want to say Michelle and Greg are on the Eastern Missouri Transportation Coordinating Council, which guides this program. When the grant was applied for, 80% of the funding comes from MoDOT, 20% of the funding comes from Missouri Developmental Disabilities Council. So Boon's Lake manages it, I'm the mobility manager, I work out of the Boon's Lake office. But every two or three months, Eastern Missouri Transportation Coordinating Council meets and we just kind of update and make sure the direction is going the way that we want it to. So, so far, so good. We're in the middle of applying for a grant to continue the program. The current grant that we have is in September 2016, and so we're looking for about the same amount of grant money to extend it another three years. When you call MoRides for a transportation referral, I won't show up in this trolley car, I won't show up in anything because it's a referral service. So people can call and anybody can call. Our target is low-income, people with disabilities and senior citizens, but anybody can call and say, "I need to get from Warrington to Moscow Mills," or whatever. And I serve five counties, but I still get calls from lots of other counties, or even Illinois, people trying to get from Illinois into O'Fallon, Missouri. And of course, they all hope that there's one bus, one train, but there isn't. So I just kind of help connect people. For example, if they're in Illinois, I will tell them to get on the MetroLink and get to the Hanley Station. From there, they can get on the SCAT bus that's in St. Charles, very inexpensive to get on the SCAT bus. They can take that all the way to Cave Springs, and then from there, I will refer them to a taxi company and they can go wherever else. And that, at $2 or $3 a mile, is tough for people. So I'm trying to work with other organizations like St. Charles Transit Authority and just all the different entities in the five counties that are trying to improve transportation out here. So we're looking for ideas, always looking for somebody that would maybe want to start a taxi company, transportation company, because in St. Charles, there's several. There's a few that don't cost very much because they're, they cater to, like St. Charles County urban transportation. If you live in unincorporated St. Charles County, if you meet two or three requirements, you can use that transportation for very little. SCAT is 50 cents to ride that all day. But out here, there's nothing. So when somebody calls me and they want to get from Warrington to Winfield, I'm referring them either to Oats, so I shouldn't say anything because there is Oats. And Oats is my, the number one person that I refer people to. But if you go to the Oats schedule, there's, it's very limited. In Warrington, it's pretty good. You can get on Oats Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday and ride around St. Char, or around Warrington at, every time you get on and off, they request a $2 donation. But if you want to go to Columbia or to St. Charles, then you have to start really looking at what day you can make your appointment because they might only go to St. Charles, you know, certain days of the week. So it's very limited to, for people to get around and, you know, to try to bring commerce out here, that's one of the first things that people look at, is transportation. So that's what this grant is all about, is trying to increase opportunities for people to move around the counties. And we're not doing that by, I'm not applying for a grant to get vehicles. Ours is about increasing mobility using existing transportation. So of course, I would like to bring some more transportation here, but it's not going to come from that, this grant. That's not what we're trying to do. I wanted to let you know that, and I think this is on your computer too, that we are in the process of applying for a grant, actually this week is our deadline. So we reached out to the city to get a letter of support, which we have, and if any of you would be interested in writing another letter of support as an Alderman, we can, I think you have the sample letter on your computer, so you can send that directly to Brian Hackman with MoDOT, or you can email it to me. And we'll get, we're putting together a package of the letters. So far, support's been tremendous from all five counties, so happy to have that. We'd like to have one from the Warrington area too. But anyway, we are also having a community forum April 7th. This is in Winsfield, at Winsfield City Hall. We tried to pick the most central location for it, for the five counties, which is Franklin, Lincoln, Warren, Montgomery, and St. Charles. We're going to have a panel of about 10 to 12 professionals, health, law enforcement, government representatives, transportation, of course. And we're just going to get a panel together and ask a bunch of questions about how we can improve the transportation opportunities and what the challenges are to just get a, we hope to have 100 people in attendance to look for some ideas and funding ideas, that's another thing we're looking at too right now. Right, we have, when we get the grant, we get 80% from the grant, but we have to find a 20% match. So we've got some commitments for this particular year grant, so we should have no trouble getting that 20%. But as moving forward, I'm going to always be out looking for funding, and one of my targets is going to be larger employers that say they have employees out in Winfield that are trying to get wherever, Old Monroe, St. Charles, Warrington, wherever they can get to work, certainties. We want to work with the employers so they can bring in employees from out of the area where transportation wouldn't be the obstacle. So anyway, that's my main focus, is that it's, I coordinate rides for people, if I can find funding for people, I do. Sometimes when people call looking for a ride, they don't know that if they're on Medicaid, that often logistic care will pay for all that, arrange the transportation and pay for it. If they have certain Medicare coverages, they might have transportation coverage where Medicare pays for it. Some people's health insurance pays for it. If a veteran needs help with a ride, I have a few sources where I can get some money to help a veteran. So I just kind of interview people when they call in for a ride, find out all their circumstances, where they're at, where they're going, and why. And then in some cases, not all, but some cases, I can go to some sources and help offset the cost of that ride, because that is the biggest obstacle. You know, I can find them in transportation, but if they don't have money, it's kind of tough, so. But I really appreciate Chief Hattie Shell and Michelle for their support on EMTCC, and they really represent Warrington well at our meetings, I appreciate that. Any questions?
The person's currently just using Oats, there's no reason for them to call you, they can continue to contact Oats directly?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And I refer, you know, that's where I start first. Any caller, when they call me, I look at the Oats schedule to see if Oats can help them. And they can still continue to call Oats directly. But for people who, some people who can use Oats, but they're not able to really make that connection or figure out the schedule or make the phone calls, they can call me and I will help them work through the telephone system.
But there is also some subsidized transportation available depending upon your circumstance?
Well, funding for it, yeah. Like I said, if they're, if they're on Medicaid, then we call logistic care, logistic care sets up all that transportation and pays for it, and they have a very small co-pay. So that's probably the benefit to most people in calling me is I know about some of that funding that they don't, or I know about transportation companies they don't know about.
How far typically ahead should a person call if they're not trying to get Oats but trying to find other sources?
It just depends on, like, you know, if they're going to use a regular taxi company, they can call an hour, in an hour they need a ride, but they're going to pay $2 or $3 a mile for that taxi company. So if they want somebody like logistic care to deal with it, or Oats, they are going to need to call two or three days ahead of time.
Because most of the people I think who are going to call the service probably require some form of subsidy, and so they're going to need to plan ahead to see if that's available.
Absolutely.
So they should probably call significantly ahead so it gives you time to work the case and try to figure it out.
Right, and if you have a chance to go to this website, mo rides.org, there's a link called Need a Ride. And if you go to that Need a Ride tab, the first five counties that I serve are listed in alphabetical order, and you will see every single transportation company listed. You can click on the link to that, then it has their website, their phone number, and their service areas, their hours, all kinds of information about them, plus a link right to their own website. And then because Oats serves so many more counties than my five counties, we went ahead and started adding other counties. So if you want transportation in Boone County, you can look at Boone County, and there's a few listed there too. So if you know of any transportation companies, you look on my website, if it's not there, or call me and ask me, I can add any transportation company in any county, and that is going to be one of our goals. We have three projects we're going to try to implement in the next three years of this grant. One is to launch a carpool program where I'm going to keep a database of people who say they will carpool, and then we're going to try to make that connection. I'm just finishing up the disclaimer language to get that added to this website. And then in the next year, I intend to work out a volunteer driver program where there will have to be some qualifications met to be a volunteer driver and to be a rider in a volunteer car. And then we realize in all the calls that I take, there's a whole lot of people that don't access the internet at all. Amazing to me. But anyway, so I've decided to take this website and create a booklet that matches the website so that I can distribute it out in the community so people can have a list of transportation providers in a booklet form. So we've got all kinds of little projects coming up, and I am totally open to ideas and questions, so feel free to call me.
Any other questions for Deana? I think that's it. So basically, she's asking for us to submit, and you have a copy of the letter in your Dropbox, the city of Warrington basically supporting the application for the grant to maintain this program. So this time, I would entertain a motion, entertain a motion to submit this letter from the city of, representing the city of Warrington to the Missouri Department of Transportation in support of this program.
I make a motion to submit a letter of, a letter of support for Boon's Lake Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock, to send a letter from the city supporting this program. Roll call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Okay, this is six to zero, so we'll...
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
...seal and deliver.
Okay.
Thank you, Deana, and good luck with everything else.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Terry Thorne, Director of Operations. Take us through all your good things, tell us some good...
Well, this is the time of year when we always provide for the board and the public a summary of the city's major accomplishments from the prior calendar year. You should have that in your Dropbox, but for the public's purposes, I'd like to just highlight some of those major things that the city's accomplished over the last year. Probably most significant is obtaining the voter approval for $15.5 million in revenue bonds for the improvements to our wastewater treatment and collection system. We were able to do that with an A-plus bond rating and the issuance of $9.9 million in revenue bonds. We have those funds and they are waiting to start construction. We've spent a little bit of that thus far on engineering. We finalized and adopted the city's first overall five-year strategic plan. My understanding is there was some planning many years ago, but at least since I've been here, it's the first time we've had a five-year, a formal five-year plan. So that was a big step. We purchased two pieces of property, one adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, which allowed improvement of placement of some of those planned improvements out there at the facility. We also purchased property across from City Hall and adjacent to the pavilion across Walton Street, which will prove very beneficial in the future. We're currently using it for some record storage, but the long-term plan is to be able to have a place where we can cover some of the city's vehicles and protect them from damage by storms and that sort of thing, in addition to perhaps some additional parking at some point when it's needed. We implemented the performance review process and completed initial reviews of all of the employees of the city. We dissolved the recreation department and contracted with Gang Time to provide management of our youth sports, which has proven very positive for us. We implemented free recycling service to all the residents of the city that were interested in receiving that service. We held our first citywide cleanup event and recycled tons of tires and more TV and computer screens than were imaginable, than we ever thought would show up. So it was very successful. Had seven baseball, softball tournaments that were held in the city last year. Implemented the neighborhood watch program through the police department who is providing support to those residents in those subdivisions that are interested in starting that program. Public Works implemented smoke testing and repaired 47 manholes. Significant improvements in our I&amp;I program, particularly with that and with the lining of some pipes, seriously reduced some of the problems we were having with stormwater and backing up into some sewers in the city. Overall crime, citywide crime index is down to 9.3%, and there were 14 new businesses that opened in 2014 in the city. Throw a lot of other things on this list, but I did not want to take the time to go through all of them. I'm sure that it will be made available out on our website so that public who wants to take a look at that can access it.
Okay. And how, and the website is?
www.warrin-mo.org, yes.
So the message to the public, you can go on the website, check all this out on your own, so. Any other, any questions on those items for Terry?
What?
And we do have a cleanup coming up too again, don't we?
In the spring. Brad's going to talk about that a little later on.
Okay.
We're actually going to discuss that. My next item for you is the actual administrative report, which consists of HR, special events. Melody, I think, has her own report later on for the year. But some points of interest, we interviewed 167 applicants this last year, which resulted in 41 new hires, 21 of those were seasonal staff, so we just have a fairly large number of those every year. Had eight accident and incident reports, with three of those being workers' complaints. Provided 17 different training sessions, either to all staff or individualized departments who received that. We had 40 sealed bids and requests for qualifications that were published and received throughout the year. And special events, held nine different events throughout last year. So those are the highlights of the administrative annual department report.
And the public can also go on the website and check these out, too.
We will make all of the, every department has their annual report, so we will make all of those available through a link on the website.
Okay, any questions on any of those items?
Okay, my next item for you is the results of a tourism commission meeting. They met on January 27th, and there were two requests, both of them from TSM, whom you know as Gang Time, both related to advertising campaigns for tournaments held in the city. And we do have the TSM representatives here if you should have any questions. But total of those requests was $9,900.
Last meeting, you guys suggested that the sales tax was up several months, that you figured it was related to our activities with sports tournaments. Do you still feel that way?
Yes. In fact, we looked at, I think we originally, the last time I talked about this, we had looked, we only had two quarters of the summer. We have since received the rest of those sales tax reports, and there is a significant improvement. It appears to be somewhere around $2.5 million in additional sales, and that's only for restaurants and those types of fast food businesses. It doesn't include Walmart, does include the grocery stores that would be affected. So just for those in convenience stores... So, just for those in convenience stores, it's a significant increase.
Well, it would make sense to make a motion to approve the tourism recommendation to award $9,900 to Game Time League, I guess.
I'll second that. Jim, is it you?
No.
Eric, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schluter, to approve the recommendation of the tourism commission in the amount of $9,900. Roll call vote.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alda Percy Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Thank you. And we do have, would you like to stand up and introduce yourself, so we've got the, from the sporting...
If you guys want to, just so we become a little more familiar with you, appreciate what you guys are doing and...
Absolutely.
Your names again.
My name is Sean Dare. I'm basically the operations guy slash IT guy.
My name is Todd Hamwood.
Todd.
Yes.
Well, does anybody have any questions for him? I think, I think what we've seen, everything so far has been really positive, and I think we're looking forward to this year, because it looks like it's an even fuller schedule than last year.
It most definitely is a fuller schedule. And we are very excited about, about everything. I mean, the City of Warrenton has been tremendous for us, and I do believe that we are, you know, rewarding that by bringing in good situations here all the way around, so.
Thank you very much, and it's a pleasure meeting you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue, continue doing a good job.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next item is a discussion. There's an ordinance that is drafted and on for approval later on this evening, related to the burning of garbage, rubbish, and other lawn-related items. This resulted from a question that was generated about whether or not it is acceptable to have a fire in a, an approved receptacle that's made for that type of fire outside. And when we looked at the code, what was very obvious is that it was unclear. We've had discussions, staff has in the past, and we even thought we were on the same page only to find out that we weren't, because it is very unclear. So, I asked Chris to look at this, to draft something that would make the code clearer. So, I'm sure Chris would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. It really does not change anything that is currently in our code, but clarifies what is allowable and what is not, so that the public understands it.
Well, I guess I have two questions. One, from a bigger perspective, I guess this is a council policy question, is why do we still have or continue to allow yard waste burning in the community? I think for people who move in from other communities, particularly east of here, that's a real foreign concept. You know, it's not allowed in other communities to burn yard waste, and why do we continue to do that? Is there a need for that, or is it...
I see it as a huge health issue. I mean, this has been a hot button of mine since I've been on the board, is burning of leaves and trash for anybody who lives in a residential area with asthma or any lung issues to have to breathe the burning leaves in the fall. It's a terrible time.
It's always been a part of our code, and I think we've had feedback kind of both ways. It would be much easier, I think, from law enforcement's perspective, to have a very black and white rule instead of kind of, that's part of the reason we suggested this, was what is yard waste, what's clean wood, what's not clean wood and whatnot. So, I mean, whatever you guys want to do is totally fine, that's an easy change to... Yeah, I mean, it's kind of up to you. It's just always traditionally been allowed in the city.
And I realize that, and I realize it is a difficulty for people to get rid of their leaves, I understand that. We cart off truckloads all the time in the fall. You know, we tried to open up the yard waste receptacle a little bit more in the fall for that and usage of that, but I just really feel that it is an unsafe environment for anybody who's trying to breathe.
Well, I disagree with that somewhat, because my wife has asthma, and I've discussed this, this topic with her, and she feels a little bit the same way I do. Under certain circumstances, you're right, but not in all cases. I mean, the leaves, leaves sometimes irritate her, she just stays inside. And I know that, she takes it as a fact of life that she has to stay inside. During that time, maybe we need to limit the time of year or periods of time where it wouldn't be so bad, but I, the property owners have some nice, too. I know you can burn leaves in O'Fallon, because my nephews and nieces do it in O'Fallon. So, you say different cities, O'Fallon, St. Peters still allow for leaves.
I just have a big issue. I've been in the older neighborhoods where it's very difficult.
Well, I think the other issue that comes up particular from my experience is when somebody is burning leaves on their property, there's always an issue of being watched, and who's enforcing that being watched. And I, over the years, have a rather constant stream of people complaining when somebody's burning in the neighborhood, because they may be burning, the wind may be blowing everything into the neighbor's yard, and sometimes there's a question of who's really watching it. And I think that seems to be one of the additional problems we have. And then, I'm a little bit concerned here that there's a special permit required by the police chief 15 days to the prior of any burning activity. I mean, is that something we really want to do?
It's for...
Well, what's special?
That's only for solid waste, hazardous waste, or infectious waste. We can ban that completely. We, our prior code had, which has been in place for a long time, was solid waste and hazardous waste at a 15-day prior. I just added infectious waste, because we never had any exclusion for infectious waste. I thought, we probably don't want this being burned in the city.
Why are we burning hazardous waste in the city with or without the police chief's approval? I mean, to me, that just doesn't sit right.
Well, that's just what our code was. So, I always try to work under the framework we have. If you guys want to get rid of that, that's really easy to get rid of as well, if you guys want to just ban that completely. Like I said, I don't know how much of this is just what has progressed with what had been allowed in the city prior. I don't know that anybody's ever applied for a burning permit, am I correct?
Not in my time.
Not in my time, have I seen somebody actually apply for a burning permit related to that, but we could just ban the burning of any of those materials completely in the city.
On that level, I mean, chief, would you be, would you feel comfortable declaring what hazardous or infectious waste would be?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. I don't think, I mean, I know it's been on the books for a while, but I think we need to do something right back, because, I mean, I'm sure he has to have some type of certification to declare what would be a hazardous material and what would be an infectious material. And I'm sure his plate is full as it is, we don't, probably need to throw that on his plate as well.
To me, why would we be burning anything that's hazardous or infectious in the city limits of Warrenton? I mean, shouldn't that just be prohibited?
Well, I think it could be, I just went off what we, I tried to work within the framework of the prior ordinance that we had, but yeah, I mean, that, we were just, what we're trying to do is, it's very clear, the advent of the outdoor fireplace and the outdoor fire pit is very popular now. So, I just added the infectious waste, because we had no banning of any disposal of infectious waste, which a lot of cities do have a ban on any type of burning. I don't know that would ever be a problem, but when you look at it, you say, well, this is what other cities ban as well. So, I just put that under the category, so we could easily make that it's not allowed at all.
I would prefer that.
Yeah, that's fine, we can take that out completely.
Do I read it correctly? You're not allowed to burn like stumps or shrubs with root ball?
No, you can't. You've always been not allowed to, if you look at it, the way it breaks down, like I said, I did not write this, make that very clear. The term does not include stumps, roots, or shrubs as yard waste, so you can burn a root ball, because it's not considered yard waste.
Oh, okay.
So, that...
But you need to put it in your portable fire pit.
No.
You know, I don't get you wrong, I think burning, barbecuing's great, outdoor fire things are great, but, you know, why are we going beyond what's, I would think, reasonable?
That's fine, we can take, I'm glad we brought this in. We can take, just completely ban the burning of any waste. Do you guys, can I get an idea from the board about what you guys want to do with the yard waste? I will tell you from, and I think in, over the years, it's much easier to enforce it when it's very clear, because, well, that's not yard waste, that's, or that's fireplace, or I'm burning this in a fire pit or something like that. If we didn't have burning of yard waste, but I think that's something you guys have to give me a little guidance on what to draft. Clearly, we'll make, we'll ban the burning of infectious waste and hazardous waste and solid waste, we'll ban that, but what do you guys want to do?
I know in my neighborhood, I got, most of the plan is three acres plus with trees, and if we don't have somewhere to go with these leaves, the mold and stuff is just about as obnoxious as a burn. So, you know, I hate to see that, at least in large acreage, not be allowed to burn or something, or unless the city plans on picking it up for us. We have to go somewhere with it.
Well, whatever you guys want to do.
It's a health issue, no matter which way you go.
Well, but that doesn't mean the city needs to pick it up for you. I mean, I pay for yard waste disposal, they come over and pick it up.
I would need a semi-plus.
Well, that's the benefit of having a three-acre lot.
That's right.
You're not a 10-year-old with asthma who can't go out to play, because everybody's burning their leaves.
I have, I have a wife that would like to come out and play once in a while.
I don't mean to interrupt, let me go ahead and ask, what are the hours for being able to dump the, the yard waste at, at our facility?
It's open anytime City Hall is open, because you have to come here and pick up your key.
If we were to go ahead and try and ban this, is there any way we can modify maybe the hours? I know it may cost us a little more for having somebody there to be able to open it, but if we're going to ban something or to allow that, is there any way we can possibly look at modifying that to be able to be open on weekends to accommodate some of the people that may need to get rid of their yard waste, and that's the only time they have open?
We can, we tried that last year, nobody came out.
Right.
That was the problem with that. So, I don't know if there's another, another way, another place that, I don't want to go back to the cemetery. We don't want to do that, do we, Brad? I don't know if there's another place that we have that we could deposit leaves that wouldn't require the lock. And the reason why we have the security issue is because the yard refuge is out by a water sewer.
Well, and, but I think, yes, it is, but it's more than that.
Yeah, we don't want people to...
When it was open, and you didn't have to have a key to get in, you got contractors dumping trailer loads of things, you've got things that are not yard waste. So, I think our plan that we had talked about was to move it onto the, the small piece of property at the corner of the acreage that we bought by the treatment plant. So, it'll actually be off of Willow Road.
Right.
And won't be within the sewer plant confines, but I don't know if you want to just leave it open so that anyone, any time can dump, because that creates a whole nother realm of issues to contend with.
Right, there's still need to patrol that situation.
We can do whatever you all would like to do, but I think, you know, you have to consider all of those different outcomes that are possible.
Did we ever look into the cost of yard waste pickup? I know...
You can get that now through the Wilson Waste Provider, but I don't remember what it is. I know it's a monthly charge.
I think it's $100 for nine months, if I recall right, that's what I'm paying anyway.
To pick up yard waste.
Yeah. You know, and I think maybe John has a little bit of a valid point. I think if there are areas in town where you have three-acre tracts, it makes, it's logical to have a different alternative. But when you're in a neighborhood where the width of the yard is 140 feet, there's no way you can burn on your property without impacting the other neighbors around you. And you're not gonna, I mean, I have more trees on my acreage or my plot of ground, and, you know, it's just my responsibility as a landlord, and I don't, I don't burn it. I don't feel like I appreciate when other people burn, you know, especially if it's two or three or four or five houses away, and the smoke's coming in your direction, you're dealing with that, you're concerned about, are they watching the fire, are they not?
How many acres you got?
I agree with Gary, if we break it up by acreage.
I have three acres right in the middle of the city, and, yeah, I have a lot of trees, unlike John, I would need a tractor-trailer truck to haul them all away. Most of the time, when I can, I push them down into that branch or something, but occasionally on the back part of it, I have burned them in the past. But it does, and I, and I would probably be guilty of, you know, when I burn them, the smoke probably does bother, you know, the neighbor to the east or something, you know. I've never checked with them, but, but, you know, depending on which way the winds blow, and even though I'm on three acres, it probably does, you know, affect them, so I don't know.
I think people have to use some common sense with it. People have to use some common sense.
Yeah.
It's hard to write common sense into the law.
That's why there's so many ordinances.
I think it's safe to say, I think we come to a unanimous decision tonight on this, to be honest.
Well, I'll take out infectious waste. We can all agree on that.
Well, I mean, we've all had a chance to think about it, put it on the agenda for next meeting.
I have a question. What are the reasons?
I would like to see, like John said, if the cities like O'Fallon and St. Peters still allow, still allow, and I would like to see what some of the others, how they...
O'Fallon, I'm on O'Fallon's ordinances right now, and they prohibit solid waste from being burned, but there's nothing, it just has a general negligent waste burning. So, it appears as though John's correct, at least in O'Fallon, I didn't look at St. Peter.
Don't quote me for sure, but I think you have to give permits from the fire department and stuff, and you don't only burn such a big amount at a time.
It may be completely regulated.
They control on how much you can burn at a time.
Regulated by the fire department, but there's no ordinance restriction from the city.
Why don't we do a survey of some other cities and compile that, bring that to you, that's the thing.
That's what I would like to see, what some of the others...
And then, put this back on the agenda.
Because, I mean, if you look into any number of places, it's a possibility there's...
Right.
My question was, how is it different if somebody's doing, having a bonfire? How does that fit into all of this? Because I'm not seeing anything that's spelled out here.
Well, and that's the other thing, is that the issue was with regards to the, the fire pit and the fireplace. I think that the fire, the bonfire would be covered under outdoor, if it's, if it's some type of device that is set up to hold the fire would be allowed.
But what if it's not, it's just on the ground? You've got piled woods.
I think that, that would, there would be a negligence, negligent burning. We have another enforcement provision that you can't negligently burn, but I think that's something else you guys, you know, kind of need to give me some guidance on, because I was really trying to just take what we had and insert kind of the fire pit, but if you guys want to address allowing that, maybe that's something you get a permit from the chief from or something like that.
I'm just thinking, if we're gonna define it, it needs to be defined in this section so that it's all spelled out, because I think that would be another gray area.
Well, that's where the, where this came up, the question came up about the fire pits that you have now, the portable ones that you have on your patio, or the ones that build the brick, or the brick and mortar ones that you have that people have, that they burn, they use them after dark. That was the thing, they said, well, it sounds like that's, it wasn't this particular case. I think they had cut down a tree, and they were burning the limbs, and they tried to say that they were using a fire pit, but I don't think there was any sign of a fire pit there, but, so...
Well, I can define that. Do you guys kind of get an idea of where you want, do you want me to put it in an allowed thing, a permitted use, where they have to get a permit, or do you want to just kind of put a definition in place for it?
And, you know, some of the older homes here, I know we had, when I moved into ours, they had a huge, a huge concrete and brick burning pit there. I mean, I've since knocked it down, because it's got, but that's what it was, that's what they used it for. They used it for, I guess, burning leaves and tree limbs and stuff like that, but it was probably, I don't know, six or eight foot by three foot wide. But, you know, there were some older homes years ago, I think, that had those, those kind of burn pits, but, you know, it's not, so there again, you get into an issue of what's allowable and what you don't want to allow. But let's see, I think that's what we need to do, is move on, and let's see if we can find what some of the other cities are doing with, with regards to it and with everything, yard waste and, so... Okay, Terry, you got one other thing?
I do.
I do. Just a couple of notes for you. We received a check for a hundred and $6,000 from Century Link. That's the settlement from the lawsuit. And we would expect to start receiving regular payments from Century Link now that this is done for those costs. Also, the newsletter is in final printer format. It's expected to be in homes in Warrenton around the last days of February. So it should be showing up in the near future. And Brandy actually asked me to let everyone know that there is going to be another in-person sign up on February 20th here at City Hall from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the spring soccer league and ball leagues. So that'll be the last in-person sign up opportunity for the season. And that's all that I have for you this evening.
Okay, any questions on, for Terry before we move on? Okay, and Michelle, turn it over to you.
Good evening. I have my annual report for you for the first thing. You'll notice we had 26 leads from RCGA. They contacted us with those. We had 19 leads that we received from developers, agents, and our other businesses. And as Terry stated, we had 14 new businesses come in. One is Hibbett Sports, who are very excited to have the tournaments here. And they have, we've actually contacted Todd, the tournaments and Hibbett Sports to see if they can't do some kind of promoting there to help with that. But they are very excited for that and will be sending out a information to the businesses soon to let them know about all the tournaments that'll be coming up. And if there's no questions with that, the next thing I have for you is a flyer that's in your pamphlet for the Greater Warren County and Greater Montgomery County Economic Development Council's Wildlife and Sports Banquet. This is a fundraiser that they do. I know in the past several board members have stayed up some interest in attending. It is $800 for the table. That does not include any raffles that would be interested in being done. And they are starting to sell the tables at this time.
What's, do you have a date on that?
It is, let me put it on here, May 9th.
What's that?
May 9th, 2015 is the date of the banquet.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gabrielle?
Yes, good evening. The first item I have for you is the accounts payable. You all had approved that via email, but I was just looking for the formal approval.
Yeah, what happens when you pay them, we don't formally approve them? Wasn't my idea, it was her.
I just like the fact that she looked towards Terry after that.
So is it the 192,000 figure?
Yes, 192,953.37.
And make a motion that we reapprove the payment of 192,953.37 for the payables for this fund.
Second?
It's a motion by Alderman Hock, seconded by Alderman Clark to.
And now you can go against it.
Accounts payable, but I guess to.
The motion had been passed.
Formalize it, to formalize it, I guess, would be the best term. The payment of 192,000 and some change. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schlitter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderman Castelli?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dray?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Sweating bullets.
The next time I have is the monthly report for the month of December. If you guys have any questions on that.
Well, the first line says, general fund, year day expenses exceed revenue by 57,000. It's the primary reason, the purchase of the, the property, the home over here. It's general fund, right?
It is general fund. It actually has the proceeds and the principal expenses for the COP refinance are in here. Since this fund doesn't have balance sheet accounts, everything has to run through revenue and expense, so that's.
So it's not, so there's some things in the expense that are typical operating expenses.
That's correct.
Capital purchases or they're debt related things. So you're kind of getting askew a little bit, because when you first read that, you go, wow, you know, but that's skewed. Okay.
We call it funky accounting.
A funky accounting.
I didn't know accounts could be funky. And I would know. No one's ever accused me of that.
Okay, the next item I have is the listing of budget revisions. There is an ordinance for approval on the agenda. But just to hit the highlights here, you guys have the summary that shows the amount per fund. So in the general fund, the 168,000, the primary reason for that is the COP refinance. And then there were also some capital purchases and payroll changes that you all had approved. And then in the water and sewer fund, there's the '05 COP refinance and the 2014 bond issue for the treatment plant. Stuff, and then also other capital items. So do you guys have any questions on any of the items that are listed on this?
Do we do this twice a year?
We do. Normally, we'll do it again in June. It has to be done before the July budget can be approved.
Called funky governmental accounting. I don't know any other entity that does this other than states and cities. We'll approve the ordinance, even though it's funky.
Yeah, speak for yourself.
I, oh, I will, anyway.
We'll make a motion then.
Well, we don't. We have to wait for the ordinance. I learned that much.
She has to stay all night.
Yeah, I learned that much.
Any questions about that? No. Okay. The next item I have is the preliminary budget schedule. As we're getting ready to start working on that again. The first item is the Ways and Means Committee Meeting. We'd like to schedule that so we can determine the payroll target percentage and look at the water and sewer rate increase percentage. Would you all be available on March 3rd at 5:30? That would be before the regular board meeting?
For the regular meeting. Or for me? March 3rd? Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
I guess March 3rd is. March 3rd, 5:30 p.m.
All right. Very good. If you all can, if you guys have capital items that you would like for us to consider as part of the budget, if you could bring those to that meeting, that would be wonderful.
By capital items means street projects, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
Dear Lord, everybody get working, because Gary's got a list three pages long.
I don't anymore, because my computer ran out of space.
Gary, like, takes, he takes up all the space on there.
Well, that's part of it.
My list is going to be bigger than yours this year.
I hope so.
Think the whole city.
Just wait.
I do think the whole city.
Yeah, but you just think of it right around your little railway track area.
That's part of what I do.
That's all I have.
Is that it, Gabrielle?
Yes, thank you.
But any other questions for her, by the way, before?
And she can go home, because we will approve that ordinance.
What's that?
We will approve the revised budget.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It might be a tie vote if they're breaking the tie.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Jack, I'd like to hear from you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. All I have is my annual report. If you have any specific questions, Gabrielle will be handling them.
Nice.
Couple of the highlights would be the meeting I had with the area builders. Back in July, I met with the area builders, representatives and architects to discuss ways to stimulate new construction within the city limits of Warrenton. Presented to the board and got approval for the use of master plans for new residential construction, which would allow the builders to submit one master plan, set of plans, and allow them to save on plan review fees. It would just be the one-time plan review fee, try to help, help them save and prosper. Currently, there's two area builders that have approved master plans on file with the city. I believe this demonstrates not only the city's willingness to hear the concerns of the builders, but also to take the necessary steps to make revisions of city code to help them prosper by reducing costs and turnaround time for building permit applications. I think it's very positive that we's able to accomplish that. The fall cleanup, Terry briefly touched on it. Back in October, we had the fall cleanup event. City Hall with 122 residents participating. The city received and are disposed of 184 automobile tires, 12 tractor tires, 21 four-foot by four-foot by six-foot pallets of electronics, and 3,660 pounds of recyclable metals and appliances. We also provided flyers to every resident that participated, which included information for nearby recycling centers for the disposal of items not included in the city's cleanup and the Arbor Day informational packets. The city gave away T-shirts along with prizes that included two oak trees, a leaf blower, and a weed eater. There was a lot of positive feedback from the participants, and I'm sure the spring cleanup will also be a great success. I heard nothing but positive. And I still see some of those T-shirts being worn around town, so I think it was a pretty good deal. Building Department processed 706 property maintenance violations. The top three violations were vehicles, 262, trash, 193, and weeds, 154. We also issued 167 permits. The top permits were signs, which had 52, electrical, which had 37, and fence permits, which had 29. We did have five single-family residential permits issued last year, which was an increase from 2013. We also performed 365 field inspections. This was all accomplished with 50 percent, 56% of the year, or 29 weeks, we only had one part-time code enforcement officer. And 25% of the year, we did not have anyone in the building inspector position. I think we accomplished a lot, and thanks to Rich Murphy, he, he worked extra hours when he could to help us get, just take care of, keep the city in compliance. Planning and zoning, processed 30 different items. Of the 30, 23 of the items was presented to the Board of Aldermen for their review and approval, which included seven site plans, six conditional use permits, and eight text amendments.
I did have a question on the vehicles. There was 162, but half of them were in the first three months of the year. And then it seemed to die to nothing. Did we change what we were doing or, I was kind of curious?
In the beginning of the year is when we had two code enforcement officers.
So it's, it's actually, there's, there may be just as many occurrences, but we don't have the officers or people are complying?
Or they might be complying. In the very beginning, usually a lot of people, if they have unlicensed vehicles, they may be waiting to get their taxes back to make the necessary repairs to get on, pass inspection, back on the road. That's pretty common.
Very good.
Can I ask a question about hometown bakery? I mean, is that going, keep on 47? Have, have we proceeded with that?
The site plan was approved and the conditional use permit was approved. It's my understanding, they're in the process of getting their architectural plans drawn so they can submit to go vertical.
Okay, so you're submitting statements. I keep waiting for donuts on the way out of town, like I need that.
They still have them there at the old shop.
Oh, I know. It's bad for Gary.
Okay, any, anything, any other questions or anything for Jack? Guy, Public Works.
How are we doing? Good evening.
That's a lot.
I had my annual report, kind of a brief summary. Sewer main flushing, we flushed 98,261 feet for the year. We had 32 sewer main calls, 16 were on, 16 were private. The flushing includes the root saw work that we do on the mains. It's about an average of about 8,000 feet of line we flush each month. On the sludge hauling, we hauled 128 tons of sludge. And that's an average of 784 loads on the truck, the tractor. We raised 48 manholes. And then we had 897 locates that were required by the city to go out and mark the lines. The meter changeout program, we changed out 435 meters. And then we repaired 64 curb stops, which is the water shut off on the easement side that we were unable to turn off or turn on, so they needed to be repaired. Any other questions?
Well, this is probably of only interest to me, but I'll ask it anyway. So on the top of the report, the gallons of influence into the plant, that's what's coming in?
The influence is what's coming in, and the effluent is what's going out.
Why would you have?
The numbers on the, on the influent. The meter is not reading correctly, and it's going to be changed out with our upgrades of our plant. On our permit, the only thing that we have to monitor is the effluent going out, and that gets recalibrated once a year with all the other equipment.
So it really could be, I mean, because you would think they'd be really, really close.
It's closer numbers, but it's a mag meter that's what's to the influent coming in, and it's, that cannot be calibrated, that's purchased. And we are not monitored through DNR on that, or the only thing that we have, our monitors are effluent, and that's what we have recalibrated every year.
Okay, then the other thing that's probably only of interest to me is on well five, it's like 2,000 every month?
Well, five is the old fire station.
Right.
And all that is, is just a pump that's not in our service. We use it, we use it to fill our trucks, and that's just to make sure the pump keeps operating correctly.
All right, that's all I have.
Anything else?
Any other questions? For Guy? Anything else, Guy? That's it?
That'd be it.
Hope you get some sleep.
Are you kidding me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
He didn't spend any money?
He didn't ask for a dime.
That's the next meeting.
I know they've been handling some water main breaks, which usually occur when it's the coldest weather. I know they had one.
We had one Sunday.
Sunday over on McKinley, I think it was, so it's, the guys always seem like that happens in the coldest weather, but they get, they get it done, so, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Greg Hideshell, Chief of Police.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First thing I have this evening is the annual summary for the police department from 2014. Just a couple of things. Total calls for service, arrests, those top three, down a little bit from the previous year. Not a big surprise since we were understaffed a good portion of the year. I would expect going forward that those numbers will increase linearly. We're finally to the point where we have full staff, so we'll be in good shape going forward. The CID numbers, they actually took a 67% increase in referrals to CID from the previous year. So they have quite a few more cases that they're, that they're trying to get solved for us. That 41% clearance rate is not acceptable, and that's something that we will be looking at going forward. Couple of things contribute to that. The first thing is the 67% increase in the number of cases in there. The second thing is we have a relatively new detective that was in the process of getting ramped up. So I think we should see a lot better numbers in 2014, or in 2015. The animal shelter, he kept his numbers exactly the same as the year before. 79% of dogs and cats that were taken in were placed outside of the city or returned to owners. Euthanized animals are always at a minimum. We, we always try to do our best to keep from doing that, so. so...
I was amazed at the dog descriptions. I really expected to see some more pit bulls in those, because those are what we always see.
Right.
I was surprised by that.
I think if people understand how much business is done by the department in this area, it was a list, a single-spaced list of animals for 12 pages.
Right.
It kind of gives you an idea of the kind of volume of what we're dealing with in the city as well as the animals in their department.
It is amazing how many calls he runs on, that whole department runs on.
It's amazing.
You know, every day, they're running on something and tracking something down, so they do stay amazing. Ride-alongs, we had a total of 52 last year.
How many were Karen?
50.
There were none, actually.
I know, I need to do that again.
Right. I've got a couple of ideas, Lieutenant's got a couple of ideas going forward next year to maybe increase that. You know, I'd really like to see more people come out and see what we do. I think they would be surprised at what goes on in the city.
That one ride-along I had was an arrest.
Any questions about that?
Your arrest. She called up and says, "Chief, we got her in the car."
It was supposed to be a short knife, I think she did slap him.
Any questions about the annual report?
No, but I've noticed this on yours, and I don't remember who else had it. Maybe Brad, it might be yours. Thanks for the color coding. I know that sounds really silly, but...
It's easier to read.
It's much easier to read, so thank you. No, it sounds silly.
No, not at all. All right, the other thing I have is approval to hire Nicholas Clark. He comes to us with three years of experience from the Warren County Sheriff's Department, and he will be starting Thursday, the 19th.
Okay, I can make a motion that we hire Nicholas Clark as a police officer for $17.23 an hour with a start date of 2/19/15. Second.
Second, okay. Motion by Alderman Cassely, seconded by Alderman Hawley, to approve the hire of Nicholas Clark as a police officer at $17.23 per hour with a start date of February 19th to 20th, 2015. Roll call vote?
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ray Boosie Cruz, Maintenance and Grounds.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First, you have my annual report. Couple of the highlights of it are the...I guess the first one says the maintenance work orders. We did 939 scheduled work orders, and then 365 that were generated by department heads for various things. The other thing moving down, our mowing hours. I had 3,051 and three-quarter mowing hours. And just kind of give you a little thing, Grasshopper puts out a thing to calculate about how many miles that would be, and it's taken times the...times 90, and that's what they consider a car doing 3,600 miles an hour, and that's usually where our...or, excuse me, a car doing 300, or 3,600 RPMs travels about 90 miles an hour. Our mowers run at, right at 3,600 RPMs. You calculate that out, that is a total of 274,590 miles. So when I come to you all about needing a mower, just kind of think back with how many miles out of the five...
I'll just tell you to go slower.
Well, out of the five guys that we had mowing, they averaged 54,918 miles.
That's for one season.
And that's just right last year, just the mowing season.
I can't wait to see his calculation on decoration removals.
So I'm kind of ramped up for Guy.
How many bones is that?
Wait till Guy can tell me how many flushes he got.
Yeah, I want to know how, how many yards of ribbon does 82 and a half hours of decoration?
I don't know, it goes a lot. We also changed 61 sets of blades during last year.
John wants to know, next meeting, Guy can tell us, of those hundreds of thousands of yards, break that down into number of flushes?
Flushes. There you go. The other thing we had...
Inquiring minds will... Yeah, inquiring minds will.
Inquiring minds, I don't know, okay.
The other thing that was kind of caught my eye was the 438 hours that we took over from the athletic department as far as setting up the fields and dragging the fields, and then some of that was striping the fields. We had nine hours to strip parking lots, but kind of all the work that Tom and New Guy is doing out there last year, so kind of amazing how many more hours that we've added to our part just out there helping them out, so.
I'm kind of curious. I noticed that there's a number of hours for headstone repair resetting. Is that something we do? Do you buy a plot and you put a headstone on it? Do we do something?
Actually, these are over in the old park, where the really old ones, some of them, a lot of times they'll break, like during the winter, the limestone, it'll break, and it...they start to fall over. Mark will go back, I mean, finding errors of them, we're not going to find. Instead of letting them fall, we go back, jack them back up, re...you know, kind of set them back up. And the other ones that are falling in, if we, you know, grave dug or something, we try to straighten them back up, just for, mainly for that and for our mowing purposes, that we don't damage the stone if we happen to run over it.
Right.
Anything else on the annual report?
No, I think it looks pretty good.
All right.
Now he wants money.
Yeah, kind of set you up now. Next is addition for the extra cost for the pavilion on the east side. We're looking at adding a concession stand and another couple extra restroom stalls for this. At first, we...it was just going to be a pavilion with four, or two stalls on the men, two stalls on the women, then with the game time, or, excuse me, TS. Okay, taking over, and the way it's been taken off, we kind of talked about maybe adding the, instead of pulling a trailer over there every time and working out a trailer and back and forth, back and forth with it, because we're probably going to need it if everything goes good, for Corey Lee to use, maybe use it over there, and then add this on. So we had this and the extra stalls because of what we're being generated out there now, because right now we have no bathroom facilities. We're using porta potties over there, so this would give a little something, a little bit better, plus an area underneath to kind of get out of the weather.
Is this to the south of the current?
No, actually, it would be due east, on Sea Parking Lot.
Oh.
Where the, where the two other ball fields are at now.
Okay.
On the Sea Parking Lot, on the south end of that parking lot.
Okay.
Is where we're wanting to build it at, right where the new power that we installed out there. It'd be right in that area there, so it would accommodate when we do the, if we do the lower fields and the upper fields, that'd be more of a central location, so they can, you know, both people, both facilities will be able, both places will be able to use it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for him? That being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additional amount for concession stand and the amount of $19,400.
What, are we doing the pavilion too?
The pavilion's already bent.
It's already, it's budgeted at 15, or 55. This is the additional for the extra restrooms. They have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the additional amount for the concession stand and the amount of $19,400. Roll call vote?
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Passes 6 to 0, so...
Okay.
Is that, that plan on being ready for this season?
We're going to try to, yes. If the weather break helps, and we can get started on it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Next?
Next, we have the general plumber bid. This was bid out in January. Only had two people that decided to bid on it, sent out numerous bid specs to them. Michelson came in with, was the lowest of the two that were bid. So I'd make a recommendation, we go with Michelson Plumbing.
Any questions for Brad on that?
I make a motion that we approve the plumber bid for Michelson Plumbing.
They have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Schluter, to approve the general plumber bid to Michelson Plumbing. Roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Okay, next, you have an electrician?
Next is the electrician bid. We had, again, this was sent out to numerous businesses, and we only received two of them. My recommendation is to go with Roger Owen B. Sales and Service.
Entertain a motion to approve the electrician bid to Roger Owen B. Sales and Service. Have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation to accept the bid from Roger Owen B. Sales and Service for general repair electrician.
They have a second?
So how do we, I'm asking the lawyer this, how do we assure that special language will bring apart the, will cause us to deal with the issues we're dealing with on this contractor?
I talked with Terry about that, and we have language planned that we're going to put in there. It already has language in there, but we're going to beef that up a little bit in our general contractor provision, and Terry's going to talk to Roger about it and make it very clear regarding any issues with this property.
So is there like a grace period, or is this going to become an enforcement issue?
I think, at this point, with what we did with last year, and I want to make it clear that there were two separate situations. The first one, Roger came in before the Warren County Fair came brought up the property compliance, which is also where he, his office is at. And then the second one took a longer amount of time and some visits by Jack and myself to go out there and get it done. My intention is to, or I think Terry's intention is basically to tell him it's a zero tolerance policy. It could jeopardize your contract with the city if we have a maintenance issue out of your property.
Because if we're paying for the cost of Jack's time and your time to try to enforce something, then it's no longer a cheaper, it's no longer a $12.50 issue.
I don't think there's any question about it. There's somewhat of an anomaly, because Roger's not the property owner there, but we're going to sit down and, Terry's going to sit down and have that conversation, so it's very clear. We're going to add some specific language related to his business and that property out there. And then obviously, it's going to be a fallback on the board and mayor. If we have an issue, we bring it to you guys, and then you guys are going to have to determine, do terminate his contract because he's not in compliance with the city ordinances.
Well, I mean, I guess from my perspective, the message, if we go ahead and prove this, the message tonight is, I will support terminating. If you guys ever come to the council with an issue, I mean, that's what I'm at, because there's zero tolerance here. It's like a child, in some ways, if you keep changing the rules, then they'll never learn.
We would not, in any case, with a contracted situation, we would not tolerate a contractor failing to follow the city laws. So I think we make this situation the very same situation that we would have with all other contractors of the city. In order to contract with the city, you have to comply with the city laws, and failure to do that will result in termination of your contract with the city. It's really very simple.
And I think obviously, having the board's weight behind that is going, I think, to mean a lot when we sit down with Roger and say, "You need to know how it goes this year."
Chris, the only thing I ask is, if we put some wording in there, it's not a slip-through issue. It has to be worded so that we don't hear the argument of, "It's not my property," or what be it. I want that specifically covered so that...
We will.
We don't have issues like we had in the past.
No, that's, we will definitely make sure that language is tightly related to that.
Any other questions?
So therefore, that language is firm, so if there's a new board, which there's going to be changes on the board summer, that will be brought forward.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
No.
Alderman Schluter?
With a contingent, yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 1.
Next I have is the discussion about the spring cleanup. It is set for March the 18th. The thing that came up last year, we had one that was about allowing businesses to participate, and then we would like to know as to if you all would want to, and then where do we, or where are we going to draw the line? At employees, business, the business owner itself, because we're going to have to verify that they are with the business, or just do it to city residents only. Because last year, it was, I mean, the flyer just says, you know, residents only, and then it was one of the, somebody came in and said that, well, they, you know, they're a business, you know, they own a business in Warrenton, and then, but it was a person who worked for the business that was bringing it, so we were kind of stuck. So I mean, where it's up to, because we were thinking about SAF Holland, if they decide, all those people...
I mean, I understand, I understand that complaint, but I think, I think it stretches us beyond what as a city, you know, we thought this could do and what we could benefit for the city. I mean, I do understand people trying to bring it up, but I think we need to stick with the residents.
Just the residents only, so we can verify their address or...
Yeah. My only concern, and I'm sure it's too late because we've got all, everything out there, but we could have a foot of snow on the 18th of March.
April.
Oh, of April, okay. I wrote, I thought you said March.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm looking at something else I have to tell you, but April the 18th.
Okay, now you make me feel much better.
Feel better about?
Yeah, considering the 18th of March is a Wednesday, that's a little scary too, but okay.
Was there more than one business that voiced any...
I think we just had, wasn't there one?
We had at least three that I'm aware of, because I was standing at the...
Okay, I wasn't sure we was downstairs.
I mean, you know, to me, there's a distinction between a business receiving the service of an individual resident, and a business builds into its profit margin, its sales, the cost of disposing some of the stuff, or they should, and so that's part of their business plan. And so that's why I think, you know, as a consumer, I'm buying for that business, they have to figure out how to dispose of their inventory. In any way, they should be building that into the cost of what I'm buying from them. So I just don't see the same issue as for individual homeowners.
Right, and we are going to, I talked with Mr. Brockfeld today, or yesterday, I guess it was, and we're strictly discounted, limited to car tires and light-duty, like pickup truck tires. He will not take the tractor tires, the tractor trailer tires, and they have to all be dismounted.
Yeah.
They cannot have rims on them, otherwise he will charge us an extra fee. And I said we were okay with that, so...
I think it's a great thing to express.
Yeah, it's a lot easier handling those...
So much things.
Regular tires and the tractor trailer.
Enjoy those tractor tires full of mud and gunk. Enjoy those tractor tires full of mud and gunk.
I think some of those were from Big B Trucking, some of those tractor, tractor trailer tires we got.
Okay, so you'll be able to handle the wording of it and everything?
Yes, we will, we'll take care of that on the flyer and what we put out, so. And we will just do it to residents only, just so they, people know.
Make it very clear.
Yep, it will be very clear. And then I have one other thing, and this is for the board. March the twenty-fifth is the Tree City USA Awards luncheon. If any of you all would like to attend, please let me know so I can send it in to.
To Cancun?
Oh, huh? Yes, yeah, no, it's in DePere's, is where it's at, down at their city hall, I guess is what it's called.
Okay, any other questions for Brad? Okay, thank you, Brad.
All right, thank you.
Melody?
Good evening, Board. For you, I have the two thousand fourteen annual report. There were a total of ninety-two meetings. The board passed seventy-seven ordinances and seven resolutions. There were sixty-five public service notices placed on the cable channel. There were five-hundred-and-fifty-two record requests and fifty-five burial arrangements.
What, what, how many, what percentage of those record requests were sunshine law requests? Did you have a ballpark for that?
Probably like maybe five percent.
Five percent, okay.
Any questions for Melody? That was quick and, quick and easy. Okay, I'm going to move on to bills and ordinances.
Call for the first reading of bill number zero-six dash fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Drayer. First reading, introduction, first reading of bill number oh-six dash fifteen.
An ordinance authorized the mayor to sign a license agreement between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Civic Live for municipal website redesign and hosting.
Call for a second final reading passage of bill number zero-six dash fifteen.
Motion by Alderman Schluter, seconded by Alderperson Holly, for second reading and passage of bill number zero-six dash fifteen.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a license agreement between the City of Warrenton, Missouri and Civic Live for municipal website redesign and hosting.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
This is where we make Gabby mad.
Oh, yeah. Make a motion that we introduce bill number oh-seven dash fifteen for the first reading.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark for the first, or first reading of bill number zero-seven dash fifteen.
An ordinance amending the budget of the City of Warrenton, Missouri for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
Call for the second final reading and passage of bill number zero-seven dash fifteen.
An ordinance amending the budget of the City of Warrenton, Missouri for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
Roll call vote?
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
This one's tabled.
Motion going to executive session? For purposes of counsel and litigation.
I'm sorry, who was it?
Gary made the motion, I seconded it.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark. Close regular board meeting, go into executive session.
You finally did something!
Legal counsel and litigation.
Roll call vote?
Alderperson Cassely. Roll call vote, Cassely.
Do what?
It was Ock and Cassely.
Oh, Ock and Cassely, I'm sorry.
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote?
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Drayer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?